Call the meeting to order. Everyone, please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Burke?
Here.
Mrs. Dye?
Here.
Mr. Mandela?
Here.
Mr. Sekala?
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items that appear on the agenda. Seeing none, move on to our committee reports. Good evening.
Good evening.
Board members, Mr. Featherman, Ms. Tavonier, Ava?
Hi.
Do we have any committee reports tonight?
I just have a quick one. I attended the rec board meeting last week, and one of the big things was one of the members, Regina Gerth, who has been on the rec board for 38 years, is retiring as of January 1st. And it's kind of exciting, she was one of the 38 years. That's why I'm talking about it, because that's a long time. Anyway, she was, if not the first woman on the rec board, one of the first women on the rec board, and she was just talking about how the days when, you know, women weren't really supposed to say anything when you were on the board and everything, and clearly that has changed. So it was just, it was, it was kind of nice, and so the rec board will be looking for somebody else to fill her seat, but 38 years is a really long time, and I just thought that was kind of interesting. So, anyway, and then there was a little bit of a discussion, because as you know, as part of the negotiation with K-Hub, there's going to be a senior center, but as of right now, there's not supposed to be a gym in that community center. And so there's a little discussion as to why that is, and if there's anything to be done about that. So I'm just passing that on, that you may want to ask your local town councilman about such items, if that's something we think the town may be interested in. I understand there's a shortage of space for basketball people to play. So, anyway, that's that. And then there was a small discussion on where to have the fireworks this year, only because the high school fields will not be able to accommodate that due to the plans with the referendum. And that was that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Are there any further committee reports?
I attended the North End FSA meeting in November, which was very well attended. We talked a bit briefly about the concern about voting in schools and kind of that dialogue with regards to polling locations. And the Holiday Shop is this week here at North End, and the next meeting will be in February.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Any other committee reports? Okay. We had three presentations planned for this evening. Unfortunately, Mrs. Marinelli, this would be her last meeting as a board member. She got tied up at work, and she's not going to be able to be here this evening. And if she does, if it does work out that she can get here, then we'll do the, we'll do the member recognition, little award ceremony that we have for her, but it's unlikely that that's going to happen tonight, so we'll save that for another, another meeting. But we still have plenty of, plenty of presentations tonight, so we're going to start with a presentation on the advancement of college and career readiness, and this is a presentation that's going to be delivered to us by Mrs. Burke.
Thank you. So, one of the board goals this year is to do research with regards to career and college readiness. Thank you. And one of the things that have been, has been very interesting to me is specifically AP coursework at the high school level. And so myself and Alexa Rubino, who is our new guidance counselor at the high school, attended the College Board Forum in Washington DC on November 5th. And so the points that I'm going to talk about come directly from two different sessions I attended, featuring two different high schools that have really made a significant turnaround in their AP program participation. And so that's really what, I'm just going to take a couple minutes to talk about. So what kind of culture do these schools have that have made significant turnaround with regards to that enrollment? They make a celebration of academic success, a celebration of teacher success, celebration of student achievement. They make it cool to be smart and to take hard classes. So they're changing kind of the way kids think about coursework. There's a school-wide climate of achievement, it's cool to be smart, teacher placement based on success, not tenure, and then all students, all students have the opportunity to participate in AP coursework sometime in their four years of high school. Now, there's a tremendous amount of work that goes behind this. I'm, I'm not trying to minimize anything, and it really starts at the elementary schools. Just at the last FSA meeting, Ms. Dyer was talking about, you know, increasing stamina and rigor at the elementary level, so that they're, they're good students, and they're curious, and they work hard towards a goal. We live in a society that's, everything is instant, but in order to navigate these classes, it's not instant. It takes a lot of hard work. So this, the formatting of it kind of got out of whack, but just so, Fort Lauderdale High School, they have three categories. So they have their high achievers, solo flyers, their push students, and their basic students. And when you look at their course progression, which I don't have, it just kind of shows that depending on what, where the student sits, some of those high flyers might be taking AP courses starting freshman year, and then moving towards it. And then some of those basic students might be able to get to an AP course by senior year. So I kind of categorized too, kind of the progression of our kids. So progression of honors to AP, progression of CP to honors, and then CP progression, and that's college prep. So kind of how our kids are somewhat classified. And so when you start looking at those progressions, and in your curriculum guides, how students get from point A to point B, that's kind of the flow. But what they've been able to do is change it so that all those categories make it to AP coursework at some point in their high school career. Now, there's a tool called AP Potential that comes from the PSAT test. So this reporting from the College Board tells you what students have the potential to earn a three or higher on an AP exam based on the AP course. So when you, when the school gets their PSAT data back, they have this report for all of the students that took the test. So this is a great place to start looking about what courses should we offer, and what kids should be going into those courses. And research shows that that, those scores predict performance on specific AP exams, often with more accuracy than other traditional, traditionally used methods. So I'm not saying it should replace what we do now to identify AP students, but I think it's, it complements it. So this is a sample report. So we haven't gotten our PSAT data back yet, it should be back in January, but this roster basically shows, so the name of the student, what grade they're in, and then by AP course, the probability of success, which means a three or higher on an AP exam, in each of those, and then a Y indicates the student who is, who could be successful in that subject. So the schools have all this data, and then each individual student also, so you get your PSAT score, and it's a paper document, but they also give you access to your College Board account. So you log on to the College Board, and they give you your AP potential student data. So basically, this shows the student where they have potential to succeed as of that year. So the students can advocate on behalf of themselves. The schools now have the data, so that during the budgeting time, and the guidance counselors have that data, so they can say, look, this is, it shows that you can be successful in this, you need to try it. So all the key players have the information. And the great news is, this year, this is the number of students that took the PSAT at Cedar Grove High School. So 110 freshmen, 129 sophomores, and 109 student, 109 juniors. So in January, we will know the AP potential of 348 students. And how many students do we have in the high school?
470.
So it's awesome information. And I know, during the finance committee last year, I knew we were going to give the PSAT to the 10th and 11th graders. I think it's awesome that we gave it to the 9th graders, because it just really expands their opportunity. And that's really all I had. I just wanted to say, you know, we've got, we're going to have a lot of information available to us to help us make decisions during the budget time, during scheduling for courses, so I look forward to seeing what that information shows. So thank you. Any questions before, do I want to open it up for questions? Should we do that?
Sure.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions about the career and college readiness presentation? You have a question?
I have a question. Why do so many freshmen take the PSATs? Is that like a...
It's new. It's new, I think just this year, actually. So it's really to help identify these kinds of things, and also help the student find out where they, where they need to work. They actually have it for 8th grade as well, which we did not administer. So 8th, 9th, and then 10th and 11th.
Also, research shows that the more times a student takes the SAT or the PSAT, better prepares them for when the score really counts for the college application process. Also, as part of the qualifying assessment scores for graduation, those test scores count towards checking that graduation requirement off, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Burke. Okay, so our next presentation is about the PARC results for year one, and Mr. Featherman, take it away.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Sekala.
It ties in very nicely to this presentation on PARC scores, the significance of which will sort of all come together. The question is, why are our freshmen taking the PSAT? And why is Mrs. Burke attending a seminar in Washington DC on the College Board? And so why is Mr. Mangilli looking to, you know, enlist all of our kids into taking the PSAT and dual enrollment courses that we have coming down the pike? Well, it's all about college and career readiness. And so some of the comments I'll make tonight will reference that, in fact, much of it does, and what the PARC scores will allow and provide for our teaching staff moving forward. In 2008, let me give you a little history. Let's see, Mr. Mandela, let's see, going back to the summer of 1992, before my first year of teaching, no, we're not going back that far, but 92 was my last summer as a non-educator. It was an exciting time, 1992, but since then, we've, we've grown, we've learned some things. And so what I'd like to talk about is what happened back in 2008, and how that brings us to the PARC results you'll see tonight. In 2008, the New Jersey High School Redesign Steering Committee finalized their report. That's going back a ways, 2008. Their work involved educators and stakeholders from across the state, and had focused subcommittees on special ed, career and tech ed, and the Abbott districts. After nearly a year, they formulated the above mission statement to guide what has become nearly a decade's worth of work to deliver on the vision. This here is the vision statement. The High School Redesign Task Force noted that while New Jersey's standards were high, that they were not aligned with college entrance requirements. And so the thread begins. In 2009, the New Jersey State Board of Education adopted new course-taking requirements for a regular high school diploma, such as four years of English, three years of math, including algebra, geometry, Algebra II, et cetera. In 2010, the State Board adopted the Common Core State Standards. You may have heard of those. The Common Core State Standards in Language Arts and Math, which are widely understood to be higher standards than New Jersey's prior standards, focused more on the kinds of skills and knowledge that students will need after they leave high school. And here are some statements from that task force. Back again in 2008, the High School Redesign Task Force courageously stated that New Jersey's old high school assessment, the HSPA, which we no longer administer, wasn't measuring college or career readiness, and frankly was all but ignored during the college application process. So why did we, why did it persist? Their recommendation was clear, New Jersey should replace HSPA with a series of end-of-course assessments in English and math, and they've done that. And those assessments should be aligned with the expectations of college entrance requirements and the workforce. The College and Career Ready Task Force again confirmed this direction in 2012. As a result, New Jersey joined the PARC consortium. Those tests need to be replaced, and we replaced them. That's the bottom line. Let's talk about New Jersey statewide assessment program briefly. As you know, the PARC assessments replace our old assessments, the NJASK, which is still alive in science, you'll still get NJASK scores in grades four and eight in science, and the HSPA, which was proctored to grade 11 in Language Arts and Math. Students began taking these assessments in 3rd grade, as you know, as required by federal law. As a result of a waiver won by the NJ DOE, students taking advanced coursework in middle school did not have to take two math tests. Instead, they took the assessment that was most closely aligned with their coursework. For example, a student in 8th grade who was taking Algebra I as a course was permitted only to take Algebra I as a PARC test. Those results are in. As you can see here, the PARC student outcomes are divided into five performance levels. There they are, level 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. This area here, 4 and 5, we'll talk about in much more detail in just a bit. Level 1 describes student work in the assessment that is not yet meeting the grade level expectations. Level 2, the same or similar. Level 3 describes students that are working and approaching grade level expectations. Level 4 describes what the grade, pardon me, level 4 describes work that meets grade level expectations, and the best of all is level 5, work that exceeds grade level expectations. So the score reports headed your way will indicate levels 1 through 5 with respect to your child's performance in the Language Arts and Math PARC assessments. The scores literally just came in yesterday for grades 3 through 8. They're being folded and mailed out to you. You'll receive them next week. High school scores have already gone out. If you have a high school student, you already have them. Let me deviate a bit and throw something in here that pertains really to the high school parent. I don't want to get off too far on a tangent here, but this is important information. I just mentioned to you levels 1 through 5. This is the graduation requirements, the most recent version, that our guidance council is, at the high school, are monitoring very closely for each child. Why? Because there are, there is a whole host of assessments that a 9th through 12th grader graduating in these classes must demonstrate proficiency on to graduate. But for this discussion, let's focus on PARC. So if you have a 9th grader, and you're receiving his or her PARC scores, if they received a level 4 on the Language Arts, or a level 4 score or 5 on the Algebra 1, they have effectively met their graduation requirement. Congratulations. Now really, more importantly, and seriously, grade 11. You'll notice that the threshold for passing ELA, Language Arts, that is grade 11, is level 3, 4, or 5. Likewise, for Algebra 2, it's level 3, 4, or 5 as well. So these scores are all being compiled for each student at the high school, and a running list of, of scores are being kept. And once, once any one of these scores in each of these columns is met, that child's graduation requirement has been satisfied. Okay, this, this discussion tonight is not about this. We'll be talking more about it at future meetings, but any questions on this slide in particular? I'm going to leave it and not refer to it again.
Mr. Featherman, this is provided to us from the state.
Yes.
This, we didn't create this, just to be very clear.
We did not.
Right. This is, right?
Correct. 100% correct. The state, these are the guidelines, the New Jersey Department of Education has provided us, absolutely.
I'm sorry, I have another question.
Please. It's a lot on this slide.
Why is the threshold lower in grade 11 than it is in 9th, 10th, and 11th? That doesn't make sense.
Well, for starters, the Algebra 2 test has never been, there has never been an end-of-course Algebra 2 test before. So our teachers have not had past results to sort of align curricula and sort of get things right. So the DOE thought that, let's, let's lower the threshold score to 3, because it's a tough test, and because we don't have the historical data to have better prepared our teachers and students to score higher.
And how about for English, Language Arts?
I don't have a definitive answer, but I can sort of conject that if you're a senior now, and you took that test as a junior, it probably made sense to lower that threshold given the data that the, the DOE was seeing. Understand something, these threshold scores were developed after the assessments had been scored. So my guess is, they looked at the data, they looked at our current seniors and thought, we're better served if we make level 3, 4, or 5 a passing cut score for our current seniors. That's my guess.
And this is stuff that the state gave, they're deciding the levels and all that calculations.
Right. Correct.
And when we say "our," wait, are levels on us, or is that the same levels across? Does everyone have the same standards?
I'm going to show you an individual score report, and you'll, you'll have more context for these levels 1 through 4. You'll see them on the reports. We'll show you that in just a bit.
But this table is for every high school in New Jersey.
Correct.
Is this exactly the same?
Correct. Every high school in the state.
Right.
So when he's saying the word "our," he doesn't mean our individual high school seniors, he's talking about the...
Collective "our."
In New Jersey.
Correct.
Which is all tied through the state.
Correct.
That's right.
Right.
Not us.
Correct.
The state Cedar, Cedar Grove's level.
No.
This is a special district, but not that's special. There's a lot of data on some of these slides coming up. I'll take my time, but I'll make some comments, and then we'll take questions on them. As you can see here, this is the New Jersey PARC outcome for 2015. These are the state values. Here are your levels 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and the percentages of each grade levels across the state, and how they look. This final column here is the percent of those that achieved a level 4 or 5 collectively. So to translate, grade 3, 44% of 3rd graders across the state earned what? A score of 4 or 5. Let's try that again. Grade 4 across the state, 51% of 4th graders across the state that sat for PARC earned a...
4 or 5.
4 or 5. That's important to know, because I did the same thing with our district's data, as you'll see. Okay, so you have a sense of what this looks like. Again, this is New Jersey across the state. Likewise, here are the state's results for mathematics. Again, in a similar vein, this is where we focus. Those that are meeting or exceeding expectations, those that passed, let's put it into terms that we can better understand. These are the statistics for New Jersey. Now please note that we're talking about grade 8 here. There's an asterisk here because what are, what are many of our top math students in 8th grade? Which course are they taking? Our top math students in 8th grade, they're taking Algebra 1. So the statistics here for grade 8 aren't necessarily reflective of, of our grade 8 statewide population, because a lot of them are taking Algebra 1. And you'll see that discrepancy in our statistics as well. Our grade 8 math scores are relatively low, because our top math performers in 8th grade are taking Algebra 1. You ready? Here we go. Now we're talking Cedar Grove. This is the real deal now. Give you a minute to digest that. Now let's look at our data. This chart shows the district-level outcomes for the first year of the PARC assessment in each of the grade levels for Language Arts. The first column indicates valid test scores. So these are the number of students collectively. Okay, this is North and South End combined in grade 3, North and South End combined grade 4 that sat for the ELA PARC assessment. The scores are great! Well, relatively, don't you think? Again, here's the state column that I moved, that I brought forward, and these are our Our numbers are quite good. We shouldn't be surprised by that. So what this says here is that 65%, okay, granted, that means 35% what?
Did not.
Did not, met or exceed. We acknowledge that, and there's lots of work that I'll touch on that we're doing and will continue to do, address that. But 65% as opposed to 44 across the state in grade 3 met or exceeded. That's fantastic. Even better in grade 4. There's some strong numbers here. Strong numbers here. Look at grade 7, again, Language Arts, 71% met or exceeded. That's good stuff. Grade 11, 70%. Why, Mr. Featherman, why is this number so low? Can someone tell me why this number might be so low? We have about 115 11th graders.
What'd you say?
They did. Correct. We do have an opt-out factor here. So take that into consideration. Some excellent students opted out, some of our other kinds of students opted out, so we take this number with a grain of salt. There were opt-outs across all grade levels, relatively few as compared to grades 10 and 11. These are just things I'm pointing out. I know it's a lot of information.
So one question I have with regards to, especially a high school opt-out. So high school, we were told last year that the PARC would not be a graduation requirement.
And it's not.
But it's in that chart.
Right.
That it can be a graduation requirement.
Right. It's one of the number...
It's one of many to pick from.
One of many.
That's interesting. So do you think that that will change the opt-out scenario now that it's one of many?
I sure hope so.
Right. Because it's an option for them to just...
It's a strong option. An option we're working very hard to ensure that our students perform well on.
Right.
So that's my soapbox moment. Please, do not opt your child out. It's your prerogative, I get it, I respect that. But what we're, what we're building towards here, we need your, your child's data, as do you when they get to high school. It's a way to check that graduation requirement box, one of the ways. Any questions on Language Arts, our district performance? I understand there's a lot of information. I'll have this on the website, we'll get it posted up. Angel will take care of that, it'll be there for you to devour. How about mathematics? This chart here shows the district-level outcomes for the first year of PARC for math. Again, strong numbers. Strong outcome for Cedar Grove. Went out grade 8 again. Again, our strongest 8th graders were taking the Algebra 1 end-of-course assessment. We did well. Notice the number of test takers, there's a lot of them, that includes 9th graders, some 10th graders, and many 8th graders. So that number is inclusive of three grade levels. Algebra 2's a tough, tough test, no doubt about it. We will work on that, we will get better. We will get better. Any questions on the math outcomes? I know, a lot of information. This chart shows the percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations at North End and South End in Language Arts. We all love a comparison, right? And I do this not to disparage any of our schools. I love them all equally. But the reality is, there are some differences. At North End, grade 3, we're looking at a strong met or exceeded proficiency mark there. At South End, that's great. Grade 4, strong showing. Something's going on with our 3rd grade at South End. This is just the tip of the iceberg for what Park provides us with. We're excited and eager to get down to the brass tacks here. What's going on? Why, why this discrepancy? We're going to find out. We're going to fix it. Mathematics, ah, nice numbers here. What's going on in 4th grade at South End? We'll find out. We're going to find out. Strong numbers, though. In the next several months, we as a district will undertake an effort to learn what we can from the first-year Park results. Of most importance is using this data to inform our understanding of our strengths and gaps in our curriculum and instructional practices. We've been working to implement our new standards in earnest for approximately 2 years now, and this is the first set of assessments that are aligned to those standards. Unlike our prior assessments, Park will provide the district with the ability to analyze our students' outcomes at the standard level. Thus, we will be able to reflect on our particular strengths and weaknesses. Also new in the Park Assessment is the release of real test questions. Our teachers will have access to real test questions with real annotations by real test scores. They'll actually be able to see what the test scores we're looking at and the comments they made on those students' responses. Thus, for the first time, we can look at test questions, review student work together, and understand how the student work met or did not meet expectations. HESPA and ASK did not allow us to do that. They never released test questions. They couldn't afford to do that. The bank of test questions was too shallow. The Park Consortium of 10, 11 states plus DC, much deeper pool of questions, they're releasing them to us. Using these test questions, we will help our teachers understand the standards for students more fully, and for many teachers, seeing how their students are assessed brings greater clarity to what standards actually mean. Before we conclude, I'd like to mention a set of resources that have been developed for parents to help them understand the new score reports. You'll get them, there's a lot of information on them. They can be found, the few references, the resources I'm going to talk to briefly about is at UnderstandTheScore.org. Check it out. Now, to help you understand further your individual score reports, we will be holding a parent meeting scheduled for January 12th at 7:00 PM at Cedar Grove High School. Message will go out to everyone again, it's January 12th at Cedar Grove High School. We will encourage you to bring your child's individual score reports with you. We will take and answer any questions that you have, as well as go through the resources that I'm referencing right, excuse me, right now. There's a video that we'll probably be showing on the 12th. I'm not going to show it now, it's about 4 and 1/2 minutes long. There are excellent resources here. Here's a quick look, and we're almost finished, a quick look at the individual score report. This sort of brings it all together. I know it's a lot of information, and I apologize. But your child's name will be here, and you'll see what's going on. This is Language Arts. The overall score here is level 3 for this child. Here she falls between 725 and 750. It's a solid score. We prefer that they're in level 4 or 5, but the teachers will figure out why this child's at level 3. Okay? So, this is what you'll find most interesting when you get your individual score reports. You'll want to know exactly where. I can't wait to get my kid. I have a 7th grader and a 4th grader. They both sat for Park, and of course, I'm eager to get my hands on those score reports Again, some other ideas and steps parents can take to go to UnderstandTheScore.org. And lastly, one more reminder, January 12th, we'll have that presentation. Invite you to bring your score reports with you. Snow date is the 13th? Or, I'm sorry, we changed that. The snow date's going to be Thursday, the 14th. Who would dare ask a question now after all that, I know. Thank you for your attention, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Featherman. It's great to see, we've been hearing for so long about Park and how we're going to be able to use the data to understand more about our students and their learning, and it's great to finally see some of that, you know, come to life. So, I'm sure as we move forward, it'll be, it'll be great. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment and say thank you, Mr. Featherman, because that was pretty clear to understand, the presentation, and it, I think, for those parents that may not want to wait until January 12th, remember that our board information is on the website, on our district's website. This is for people at home, I'm saying this for right now, really. So, you can go on our website and look at Mr. Featherman's presentation to help you figure out your child's test scores if you have questions before January 12th, if you're, you know, want to figure it out before then. So, just wanted to thank you because you made it very clear for someone to do that. So, thank you.
Okay, let's move on the agenda. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, under minutes, may I have a motion for items B1 through B4? B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of November 17, 2015. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of November 2015. B3 is a motion to approve the Treasurer's and Board Secretary's report for the month of October 2015. And B4 is a motion to approve the Board Secretary's certification to the Board of Education pursuant to the Administrative Code that no line, item, account has encumbrances or expenditures which exceed the appropriation and violation of the code. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burr?
I abstain from B1 and B2, and yes for the others.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Secala?
Yes. Under bills, may I have a motion for B5, which is a motion to pay the list of bills that was provided to us in our packet at the amount set forth in the agenda. May I have a motion for that item, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Secala?
Yes. Under business, may I have a motion for items B6 through B15? B6 is a resolution that in accordance with the CGCA agreement, employee number, is this CGEA agreement? Is that?
Custodian.
Custodian, okay, gotcha. The CGCA agreement, employee number 0198 shall be paid for the unused vacation days as set forth in that item. B7 is a motion to approve Ahira Consultants to provide asbestos oversight monitoring at the Cedar Grove High School in E-Wing as set forth in that item. B8 is a motion to approve Lilich Corporation to remove 4,824 square feet of non-friable floor tile and mastic in the Cedar Grove High School E-Wing as set forth in that item. Motion B9 is a motion, item B9 is a motion to approve BRS Incorporated to provide packing and moving services in Cedar Grove High School E-Wing during the December holiday break as set forth in that item. B10 is a motion to approve relocation strategies to oversee the project and move management of select classrooms and storage closets in the E-Wing at the high school. B11 is a motion to approve CJ Vanderbeek Change Order Number 1 for painting in the Cedar Grove High School E-Wing Boiler Room Floor with epoxy paint as set forth therein. B12 is a motion to approve CJ Vanderbeek's Change Order Number 2 for additional work that was required in order to pass final code inspections as set forth therein. B13 is a motion to approve CG Vanderbeek's Payment Application Number 3 in the amount of $9,500 for work completed on the Cedar Grove High School E-Wing Boiler Room Project as set forth in that item. B14 is a motion to approve CJ Vanderbeek's Change Order Application Number 3 in the amount of $680 as set forth in that item regarding the E-Wing Boiler Room Project. And B15 is a motion to accept generous donation in the amount of $750 from the Brain Injury Alliance of New Jersey. This donation will be used by Cedar Grove High School driver education students. May I have a motion for those items, please?
Shall moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Secala?
Yes. Okay, this evening, we are pleased to welcome Ava Kreismer to our meeting. She is the representative from Cedar Grove High School, from the All Schools Council, so, welcome.
Thank you for having me back, Sharon. Good evening, everyone. So far at the high school in the past couple of months, from October to November, the All School Council, I'm the president of All School Council, we had a fall semi-formal which was in outstanding attendance. We had around 200 students, which is more on the higher average in the past years, and with the help of my cabinet and the advisors, parents donated food, and no one was left hungry. We had a DJ, we had a photo booth which was donated, well, the money was donated and contributed from the Municipal Alliance, which was a great hit, and everyone seemed to have fun. And then, recently, the CGHS drama production of The Odd Couple was a great success. There was 2 different cast, there was a female cast and a male cast. I personally went to the female cast, it was hilarious, and I loved every second of it. And the cast worked extremely hard, they were great, it was amazing. So far, Penny Wars just ended, which was an All School Council fundraiser for Lip Sync, and it was just basically, we left these jugs out, and every grade got their own, and a penny was worth 10 points, and everything else was a deduction. And the whole point was that whoever won Penny Wars was able to set up the, I guess you can say, setlist for Lip Sync. So, the seniors did win, so were able to choose which grade goes first and who goes last. And it was great, it was, so much money was raised. I'm not sure how much, but we were able to count that, and then the All School Council's going to donate that to a certain charity of our choice, but we have to decide on that, which will be chosen on Thursday, which is our next meeting, this Thursday. And then, everyone knows Lip Sync is January 8th, which is a great hit, and the tickets are, I believe, online this year. They're not being sold through, like, you can't go to the high school, you have to go online, and you can set which seats you want to set, like, you want to sit at. So, do that right away because I know they're going to go fast once everyone finds out. And that's going to be at 7 o'clock, and it's going to be great this year, so, I suggest everyone come out to it. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you for having me.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
The Odd Couple was great. I saw the male cast, I didn't see the female cast.
I saw the female cast. I heard the male cast was just as good.
And I heard the female cast was just as good, too.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry I missed it.
It was so good.
I know. I heard it, it was very good.
And they rocked it.
It was so. I saw it on Thursday, but it was just the opening night.
Saturday, they really rocked it.
Because it was their last performance, yes.
So, Ava, could you tell the audience a little bit more about Lip Sync Battle?
Yes.
Because you kind of glossed over it, and it's like such an awesome event.
Yeah.
Most people don't know unless you're in the high school, know what it is.
Yes, I agree. Lip Sync is for high school only, and it's just students who volunteer their time to do this. And it's just a competition with the grades where they, everything, the students do everything. No faculty helps, just making sure they get everything in on time. And what each grade does is they make a playlist, and they just dance and lip sync, like the name, lip sync to these songs. And this year, in the past couple of years, it's been a theme, so each grade chooses a theme. So, for example, seniors' theme this year is Senior Year. So, we have our songs are contributing to like a montage of memories of like our past high school experiences. And then each grade, which I don't, I do not know the themes of every grade, it's kind of like a secret within the school, and we find out.
I don't believe their theme is Senior Year either. I don't, I think...
The seniors?
Yeah. I think they're probably telling us that, but I don't know.
I mean, you find out if you come, so...
I bought my tickets today.
But yes, usually those themes are revealed on the day of Lip Sync, which is January 8th, again, if you were wondering. And that's all it is. It's a great time for every student, you know, boys and girls participate, it's not just girls, it's not just boys, everyone comes together, teachers come out, basically the whole town comes out, and it's in the high school auditorium, which they sell out very fast, so. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Featherman, we have a superintendent's report this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Secala. I don't want to take up too much more time, but there are a couple few things that I thought I would highlight in the report. A couple few things. We're talking a lot about college and career, but before I do that, just, I'm amazed every time we put these reports together, how much is going on across this district from grades pre-K through 12. The report doesn't quite do it justice, but if you do have time, we post them, just glance through them, and it's just chock full of such rich experiences that these kids are having, or teachers are painstakingly putting together for your kids. It's awesome. So, I'm just going to take a couple few, a couple few highlights, and then we'll move on with things. Most notably, under Board Goal 1, college and career readiness. There's much going on, that's been the emphasis for quite some time at the high school, but it's not just for the high school these days, okay? We've learned that, that lesson. College and career readiness starts, well, at North End and South End, and I'll just highlight one particular thing that's going on down there to sort of promote it from a very early age. But for starters, at Cedar Grove High School, we're looking into adding 2 new dual enrollment elective classes for 16, 17. Currently, the principal, guidance department, and business departments are in touch with both Fairleigh Dickinson University and Syracuse University to add accounting and sports management as college credit courses for juniors and seniors. So, we're excited. Currently, we only offer 1 dual enrollment class, that's tomorrow's teachers. So, the process will begin for Cedar Grove High School to add additional courses where our kids can earn college credit, assuming they do well, at a reduced rate, let's put it to you that way. And we're excited, again, it's more, it's all about our, improving our college readiness profile. At MMS, what's going on there in terms of college and career readiness? Well, as you've heard, we've created an outdoor learning center. Little update on that, the greenhouse has been assembled, and our pond with waterfall feature is nearly complete. I was there today, it is complete, it looks great. The MMS Science Club has already planted bulbs and tested the pH of our soil, so the work has begun. What's going on at North End and South End? Well, how about to help our children become college and career ready, teachers and staff will wear college shirts to school and speak to the children about the college they went to and why. Over the next few months, South End and North End will take part in a number of activities to help spark an interest and understanding of what it means to be college and career ready. It's never too soon to start. I wanted to highlight a particular legislative update, a bill signed into law by Governor Christie on November 9th. A4485 prohibits the Education Commissioner from withholding state school aid from a school district based on the participation rate of its students on state assessments. There's been a lot of talk about the withholding of state funding for school districts that drop below a certain threshold for park participation. Well, clearly, that's no longer the case, just wanted you all to know that. Districts will not lose money based on their park participation rates, so we were happy to hear that. And I think that's all, well, I wanted to just briefly mention the fall season at the high school. I know Ava touched on some things. We've now gone from a very successful fall slate of athletics, ranging from girls volleyball and tennis to cross-country, boys and girls soccer, and certainly football, who got to the state finals, as you probably know, and lost a tough fought match to the Hillbillies of Verona, 21-14. So, congratulations to all of those student athletes. We've already transitioned to winter season, and our student athletes are busy once again. If I don't get a chance to see you or speak with you, I wish everyone a healthy and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Featherman.
If I don't get a chance to see you or speak with you, I wish everyone a healthy and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Featherson. Under personnel, may I have a motion for S-1 through S-13? S-1 is a motion to approve the superintendent's report.
Yes.
S-2 is a motion to approve Patrick Marciano as district grounds custodian, grade two. Step two, the polated amount set forth therein. S-3 is a motion to approve the extension of Susan Peterson, MMS math maternity leave replacement, as set forth in that item. S-4 is a motion to approve the staff members as set forth therein with the state emergent hiring procedures. S-5 is a motion to approve Thomas Sweeney, substitute custodian, as set forth in that item. S-6 is a motion to approve Adriana Durso, junior varsity softball coach, as set forth in that item. S-7 is a motion to approve Kathleen Hall for the interact club stipend for the 2015-2016 school year, as set forth therein. S-8 is a motion to approve Jessica Delvecchio detention monitor at the curriculum rate for the 2015-2016 school year. S-9 is a motion to rescind Kathy Slattery and Kelly Batista with regard to South End morning care duty for the 2015-2016 school year. S-10 is a motion to retroactively approve Pam Witchot, South End morning care duty effective December first, two thousand fifteen, for the 2015-2016 school year. S-11 is a motion to approve curriculum writing for the 2015-2016 school year, as set forth therein. S-12 is a motion to retroactively approve a sixth grade class for the staff members as set forth in that item. That would be effective December seventh through January nineteenth, December seventh, two thousand fifteen, through January nineteenth of two thousand sixteen. S-13 is a motion to approve the instructors as set forth therein for the Cedar Grove High School prep course to be offered to all eleventh graders beginning Monday, January eleventh, two thousand sixteen, through Thursday, May fifth, two thousand sixteen. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes. May I have a motion for items S-14 through S-25? S-14 is a motion to approve on second reading the proposal to allow the Cedar Grove High School varsity cheerleading team to attend the AmeriCheer International Cheerleading Competition in Orlando, Florida. S-15 is a motion to reimburse the school-based volunteers as set forth in that item. S-16 is a motion to approve the school-based volunteers that are set forth therein. S-17 is a motion to approve the substitute teacher as set forth in that item. S-18 is a motion to approve the sub lunch aid as set forth in that item. S-19 is a motion to authorize attendance at the events set forth therein. S-20 is a motion to approve the leave of absence as set forth in that item. S-21 is a motion to approve the students as set forth therein for classroom observation. S-22 is a motion to retroactively approve Jeremy Lugameno to provide supplemental assistive technology instruction as set forth therein. S-23 is a motion to retroactively approve Beth Legra to provide supplemental reading intervention instruction as set forth in that item. S-24 is a motion to rescind Joseph Cardinal, high school detention duty for 2015-2016 school year. And S-25 is a motion to retroactively approve Vincent Cardiello for high school detention duty for the 2015-2016 school year. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? The only comment that I have is that on S-19, last board meeting, we approved the resignation of Christine Holmberg, so she should be removed from that, that item, before we approve it. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes, to everything except I abstain from S-23.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes.
Mine was an aye. My microphone was off, sorry.
I think they got you.
Under curriculum, may I have a motion for S-26, which is a motion to adopt the revised and aligned curricula that was provided to us for the 2015-2016 school year in psychology and sociology?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes. Under contracts, we have a motion for S-27, which is a motion to approve the following contracts, or the contracts set forth below, for the 2015-2016 school year for special education students as recommended by the Director of Special Services. May I have a motion for that item, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes. The meeting is now open to the public for comments for items that are either on or off the agenda. Step right up to the mic. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Tara DiMattei, sixty-three Cedar Grove Parkway. Hi, everyone, I'm here to speak today in order to protest the installation of a crumb rubber field at Cedar Grove High School. I am a lifelong resident of Cedar Grove, as is my husband, Rob DiMattei. We're both graduates of Cedar Grove High School. We're familiar with the fact that there is a lack of available field space in Cedar Grove. We wholeheartedly agree that the installation of a turf field would benefit the people and the children of Cedar Grove during the present time and in the many years to come. I am not against a turf field, please do not misunderstand me. That being said, however, I absolutely do not believe that the new field should be installed using crumb rubber infill as a result of new anecdotal evidence, which is coming to light, that suggests a connection between crumb rubber and cancer, most particularly lymphoma, in the children and teenagers who are documented to spend large amounts of time playing on these crumb rubber turf fields. In October, two thousand fourteen, NBC News broke a story which focused upon Amy Griffin, the former U.S. Women's National Team goalkeeper and current University of Washington goalkeeper coach, who started creating a list of athletes, most particularly soccer goalies, who had been diagnosed with lymphoma, after hearing that several of them suspected it may be from what they called "those black dots," or what we know as the crumb rubber turf infill. In two thousand fourteen, the list was thirty-eight players long. As of November, two thousand fifteen, as documented in the ESPN E60 special, Turf Wars, the list now stands at two hundred athletes, one hundred and fifty-eight of whom are soccer players. Of these soccer players, one hundred and one are goalkeepers. Eighty of the athletes on this list have some documented form of lymphoma. In the November twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen ESPN article, Turf Wars, How Safe Are the Fields Where We Play, Dr. David Brown, a public health toxicologist who spent over a decade working at the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, goes on record as saying, "You should never get more lymphomas than leukemias. Leukemias are the most prevalent cancer in that younger group, and Amy Griffin's list has more lymphomas. Her list is upside down." When asked what that might signal, Brown's response was, "It signals that there's a chemical involved." Currently, the Washington State Department of Health has Griffin's list, and is trying to establish if it sees an increased rate of cancer among soccer players compared with the state overall. Those results are not expected to be available until winter, two thousand sixteen. Meanwhile, Griffin's list of athletes with cancer who have played on turf fields continues to grow. Besides soccer, Griffin has five other sports represented on her list: football, lacrosse, baseball, field hockey, and softball. In two thousand fifteen, Dr. Brown, as mentioned above, was part of a study aimed at determining the makeup of crumb rubber. The study found that of the fourteen samples tested, twelve known carcinogens were found. Half of the ninety-six chemicals found were not government-tested. The turf industry, including the Environmental Protection Agency, claims that a variety of studies have found these fields safe, or cited low levels of concern over the past decade. But these conclusions are being drawn by the available data that has been found up until this point. Scientists, even scientists associated with the EPA, agree, however, that current turf studies include data gaps, since almost no studies have tested the exposure for ingestion of crumb rubber. Ingestion can be defined as inhalation, as well as absorption, through abrasions, cuts, eyes, mouth, and other ways that athletes are physically exposed to the crumb rubber surface. When the current head of the EPA, Gina McCarthy, was asked by Judy Foudy, the investigator by ESPN, what data gaps, if any, existed in the past studies, her quote is as follows: "It's the exposure for ingestion, and I've seen pictures showing the abrasions from some of these fields. It's left me wondering whether or not the crumb rubber can get in. Are those beads really entering the body? Do they have an ability to break down? Are they connected with these types of health consequences? And it's worth looking at those issues," she claims, "because these are the issues that I don't believe we have looked at for a long time or ever." These admitted data gaps are a large reason why the state of California is doing its third study on synthetic turf fields. This three-year study projected to be completed in June of two thousand eighteen differs from the past two California studies because, according to the California Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, they will be focusing more on the issue of absorption during that study. I find it interesting and necessary to note that, according to Jeff Rutch, an attorney with a Washington, D.C.-based environmental group, "The U.S. operates, quote, 'under the principle that your chemical is innocent until proven guilty. It goes into the stream of commerce, and only if it produces a body count is there any regulatory response,'" end quote. Many of us wonder how a product that has not been fully tested be put out on the market and used without the long-term effects being known by the public. The scenario regarding crumb rubber, however, is a simple one to understand. In the nineteen nineties, the U.S. had a major waste disposal problem, a surplus of approximately one hundred seventy-five million to two hundred and five million tires, which were unsafe for landfills and were piling up. Federal and state governments, including the EPA, looked for an alternative, alternative way to recycle used tires, and as a result, the crumb rubber industry was born. With estimates of twenty thousand to thirty thousand tires being ground up per field, the crumb rubber industry became a successful and productive way to recycle used tires. Because this was a federal project, Dr. Brown explained, people felt safe. But he goes on to say that, quote, "The people who evaluated the safety of crumb rubber were not the people who had done public health. It was the engineers and guys interested in getting rid of waste tires," end quote. Everyone here today should be aware that the very agencies citing that this material is safe are the very same agencies who are responsible for crumb rubber turf fields in the first place, and they have a vested interest in these tires continuing to fill these playing fields. This does not mean, however, that a turf field is not an option. As a matter of fact, there are several alternatives to crumb rubber infill that are currently being used in turf fields in our area. Whippany Park just recently installed an organic turf field using cork and sand infill, and the same material has been voted on for use in Hanover Park and in the Caldwell, West Caldwell, school districts. Milburn High School just recently installed a turf field using recycled sneakers, commonly referred to as Nike Grind, another alternative to crumb rubber. Organic material is more expensive, but cost should not be the determining factor in this decision. There are other things in life that I think we can all agree are more important than money. So now, I have to ask, how can Cedar Grove consider a turf field using crumb rubber infill? The current data has been deemed inconclusive, but that does not mean that it's safe. As a mother of three children, ages eight, six, and two, who will one day play on this field in the years to come, a ruling of inconclusive is simply not good enough for me, and I cannot stand behind it. When I saw the NBC News special last October in regards to this topic, I started doing research of my own. And now, what I know, I cannot unknow. What I have learned, I cannot unlearn. And therefore, I cannot allow this decision to be made, which has the potential to harmfully affect the children of our town. Most people here are parents, and I think that most of you would agree, that we want our children to be involved in sports. We want them to experience the camaraderie of being on a team, to know the sweet taste of success, to learn humility in the face of failure, and, above all else, to have fun being a kid. But what if, in exposing them to these very things, you put their health at risk? Is that a choice that you'd still be willing to make? Is anything worth the health of our children? I understand that life is filled with risks, but some risks are more reckless than others. And a crumb rubber turf field, I believe, is a reckless and unnecessary risk. Now, having been exposed to the statistics and information that you wore tonight, now you are all aware of the risks, and you cannot, you can't, you can't not, yeah, sorry, and what you know, you can't unknow. Maybe in the coming years, the above-listed studies will find that there is no conclusive link between crumb rubber and crumb rubber and cancer, but we are not fortune tellers, we have no crystal ball, and that information will not be made available until the years to come. And so I believe at this time, we have no choice but to err on the side of caution. If there is only the faintest possibility that a link may exist between crumb rubber and damaging health effects, then choosing to install a turf field with crumb rubber infill is an unconscionable gamble that should not, under any circumstances, be taken. Thank you for your time for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. DiMattei. That's a very well-thought-out discourse on this issue. This isn't an issue that we are unaware of. We've discussed this issue before, and we will be discussing it more in the days to come. My only question that I have for you is, are you aware of any studies on any of the alternative methods to crumb rubber? Well, Nike Grind, any cork, I mean, have studies been conducted on those items?
I have no information about studies, I'm working on my materials.
Okay. Well, because, you know, a concern that I think that we'll be discussing in the future is that we have, we have studies on one type, and we don't have study, we would be putting kids on a field where there's been no studies done.
Well, one includes carcinogens, right? How are the others?
Well, we don't know that, though. We don't know that. We don't know what's in...
Well, no, there are carcinogens that are found in crumb rubber.
Well, look, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I'm not going to debate what's in the quote-unquote of organic material, I'm not arguing with you. My son's, my son's a soccer goalie, okay? So, I'm looking for the best interest of, of, you know, the children as well. My own, yours, everybody's. So, I'm not, I'm not arguing the point with you, I'm just wondering whether there's studies done on this other material, because it could be possible that the other material ends up being worse than what, than what is potentially there. So, it's only a question. Um, yes. Please step to the microphone.
The only other comment that I'd like to make, while we're waiting for, is, I totally, no decisions have been made, and I don't know if you're aware, that we had a specialist come here and talk about this, because the board had questions about this before we even started considering everything. And, you know, I don't recall all the details from that report that night, but I do remember he spoke about the report that you brought up about the woman and the soccer and all of that, the report from two thousand fourteen. And he had, and I'm open, you know, to bring the gentleman back and continue this discussion, I have no problem with that. Because I, I remember, and again, I don't remember the details, but I do remember that night, going home, feeling better, and more, you know, I felt that there weren't, there wasn't really a cause to be concerned. I remember leaving here that night, just based on the information that we were given by the expert on this. So, you know, if there's new information and new reports, because, again, I don't remember how far into the reports he went into, but I do remember him talking about the, the...
The NBC News source.
Right, all of that. So, but you just brought up one for two thousand fifteen and two thousand, right. I don't think we went that far. So, I have no problem continuing this discussion, because, you know, again, I, and I believe we all do have the same concerns, and that's why we had that discussion early on, so we were, you know, looking at that, so...
Mr. Featherson did send me the presentation link, I did take a look at that.
Great.
It's used to be cited from the EPA, which, again, is one of the concerns in terms of bias, you know, but, again, like, I understand, you're just, you're saying, you know, that he came and that he spoke, and that, you know, it did sound, but, and that's fine. But I think that a lot of the information that, I mean, in the link that was included in the presentation came from the EPA, from what I saw in the presentation.
Yeah, so I, again, have no qualms bringing, I mean, I would like to do that again and do it early on, you know, if we do it in the beginning of next year right away, I would be open to that, you know, to do that.
Okay, hello. I am Marissa Gallas, and I am co-chair of the Cedar Grove Environmental Commission. I have a PhD in developmental psychology, and I have a strong interest in environmental and health effects, the link there. I attended the Cedar Grove Health System and graduated the high school here. My own sons, within the last ten years, graduated from the Cedar Grove Health High School. And so, I guess I have, I've known a lot about it over the years.
If I could just interrupt you, are you, are you a current resident?
Yes.
What is your address?
Fifteen Winding Y.
Thank you. Thank you.
Like I said, I'm the co-chair of the Cedar Grove Environmental Commission.
No, if we didn't, I don't know if you mentioned your address.
Okay, you have to be a resident.
No, 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 you just have to state your name and address when you stand up here.
Okay, that's fine.
Thanks.
I want to say, I totally agree with the last speaker. It was an excellent presentation, and she had all her facts correct. And I wanted to say that the Cedar Grove Environmental Commission strongly urges that the Cedar Grove Board of Ed looks into alternatives to tire crumb fill. I don't know of alternatives that are the best, but I think, I talked to her before, and cork sounds good. It sounds definitely better than tire fill. The data is very incomplete with regards to tire crumb fill and the health effects. The studies, I've gone over them, they are not complete. They don't look at chronic, long-term effects. They don't look at children. They don't look at adults. They have found, the one study this year that came out in June two thousand fifteen, it was a Yale researchers, they found at least ninety-six chemicals in fourteen samples of tire rubber crumb fill. One of the chemicals, for example, was lead. They found about many carcinogens. About half the chemicals had no toxicity assessments, that means, and done on health effects, and the other half had some toxicity testing but incomplete. As you know, in the U.S., it's like, things are considered innocent until we prove them to be dangerous, and that's the problem here. Another thing that she didn't mention, but that is very worrisome, and that people are just starting to think about, is that tires nowadays are starting, a number of them about, one thing I read is about thirty percent of tires contain carbon nanotubes. And the latest studies that are coming out, they're just starting to come out, they're very worrisome, and they think that they have asbestos-like effects, it's like breathing asbestos. So, if you're on ground-up tires, and you're playing on it, and if you really have ground-up nanotubes in there, they're coming out in the air, and you breathe them in, and they're long and thin, and the body can cough them out. So, and they think that it may have asbestos-like effects down the line. And it's linked to inflammation, and they also think it's a carcinogen. It can be inhaled, ingested, absorbed through the skin, enter the bloodstream, penetrate cells throughout the body, and into the brain and lungs. And, like I said before, there are no studies of children or adults exposed chronically to tire crumb over time. So, you can't call it safe until those are done. And it's just, but like the Yale researcher said, it's a witch's brew of toxic substances. And the kids are not exposed to just one little chemical, like some lead there, they're exposed to multiple. They're exposed to maybe all ninety-six. You know, you're out there, you're stirring it up, it's hot, it's all getting out there. They, the first study has just found, this is, we don't even know anything about nanotubes. This is really worrisome. It's just, this year, in October, they started, in one country in France, they started finding nanotubes in kids with asthma and stuff. And they just don't know anything about it yet. So, that's how little we know about it. The health of studies are just starting. So, I would say, we should be cautious with our children. You should be thinking about, what's the least toxic thing? And like she pointed out, cork, right now, there is no negative health effects associated with cork that I know of, but many, 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 with tire crumbs. And the only other last thing I want to say, I'm done, but I wanted to know, who is the expert that spoke to you about the tire crumb? Was it a tire crumb industry representative?
I don't even know.
That gave the presentation?
No.
An engineer.
Engineer.
An engineer?
Yes.
But that's not the one who's going to be telling you about health effects?
Well, I sort of disagree, because we're, he has no reason not to give us the information...
But that's not his specialty.
But he's going by the same reports you are, I would assume.
Right, and there's nothing there yet. I mean, it's just that this data is incomplete.
I agree with you, but all I'm saying is, to say that he's not the person to listen to, I disagree, because he obviously has done this, and, again, I have no problem to bring him back here and to listen to both sides, but to say that he's not the right person, that's like saying that you're not the right...
You need a health researcher.
I'm sure that they've gotten their information from there, but I can't speak for them. But, again, I definitely think this is a topic that, you know, we'll continue to discuss.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question, or do I need to state my name?
I have to go up to the microphone.
My name is Gina Doan. I live at thirty-six Young Ave. My question is about the engineer. I have no problem with engineers. I have no problem with having, what's wrong with having a panel of experts? Maybe someone from science, maybe someone from biomedical engineering? Is it too much to ask that it's a panel of people and not just one person's opinion? Is that relevant?
Again, we didn't use his opinion. We just used the data.
He was just giving us data.
It wasn't his opinion. That's why I don't want there to be this misconception that it was his opinion that we went by. He just brought us statistical information based on the same information. I just believe that Tara might have more updated information that I think is worth, is valid, looking at. He didn't come here on behalf and say, "This is my opinion, and this is what I think you should do." He just gave us the data that was out there.
But would it be okay for someone else to look at the data as well? And just, instead of one other, just a few other people instead of just one person?
We, as a board, have a decision to make sometime in the near future, and we're going to look at any and all avenues that we feel we're going to need to look at to make that decision. So, we haven't excluded any of that. We haven't made a decision about what we're going to do, who we're going to listen to, who we're going to talk to, but that's something that we'll be talking about in the coming months.
Okay.
And, again, I just want to, I don't know, you know, it wasn't like the board has this stand on, "We want this crumb, rubber crumb field." It's not like that at all. It's not like we didn't even look at, you know, to be honest with you, I don't even know the difference in budget numbers, because it was, we knew this was going to be something we looked at as we went along. So, the reason why we had the presentation from the engineer is because we had the same concerns. So, we wanted to know if there was something we needed to look into further, so we asked our engineers to bring us information that we could look at to make sure that there isn't anything harmful. So, that is the place the board was coming from. It wasn't coming from a place that, "Oh, we're saving money, and this is what we're using." We want to use the same, we're in this, we are on the same agreement here, so there's not, like, we're, it's not that we're not. So, it's just a matter of getting the real data, looking at it, and just seeing what the cost would be, and going from there. So, we're all on the same page, so, you know. Yeah.
Mr. Snyder?
Good evening. David Snyder is my name. I live at Four Granite Drive, here in Cedar Grove. I also serve on the Environmental Commission of Cedar Grove. And just two quick thoughts, and then to weigh in on this issue. One is, Richard Blumenthal, former Attorney General for the State of Connecticut, currently a senator for the state of Connecticut, has asked, and also the Congress, on October twenty-sixth of this past year, I'm sorry, of this year, called on the Environmental Protection Agency to conduct an unbiased study, and asked Consumer Product Safety Commission to conduct an independent study verifying the safety of artificial turf fields. So, I would just say, let's let our Congress do the work. The second thing I would say, as my age might show, I grew up and enjoy grass fields. And, in fact, my wife reminds me that in the NFL, there are numerous fields that are still grass. In fact, her favorite team, Pittsburgh Steelers, plays on a grass field. And, if you look into that, there are certain grasses that grow during certain times of the year, and grass can be just as viable an alternative field. So, those are my two comments. Thank you.
No, thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Okay, thank you. Close that portion of the meeting. We will make our announcements for our next meeting. Our next meeting will be, this is our last meeting of this calendar year. Our next meeting will be the reorganization meeting. It will be here, January fifth, two thousand sixteen, in the Media Center, seven P.M. for executive session, eight P.M. for the regular meeting. Our meetings following that meeting will be, will set forth at that meeting, because we reorganize and we'll put our calendar out then. So, there'll be another meeting in January, we just don't know the date, and I think that we're not going to go back into executive on this issue, correct? So, with that, I'd just like to say, happy holidays to everybody. Hope everyone has a great holiday and a very, very happy new year, and we look forward to seeing everyone back here in January. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned.